Good evening. We'll begin tonight's meeting. We'll have a word of prayer and then we'll honor our flags. If you would pray with me, please. Dear God in heaven, we praise you tonight for all the blessings that you give us each day. Lord, thank you for the blessing of the wonderful community that we all share and that we have the privilege of working and serving in. We pray that you'd pour your blessings out on Clovis and bring glory and honor to yourself here. We'll have a word prayer and then we'll honor our flags. I pray in Jesus' name, amen. Joining me in honoring our flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. When my nation under God be invisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of Mexico, the zealous symbol of a perfect friendship among united cultures. Our meeting is called to order. Would the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Madrid?
Here.
Commissioner Casals?
Here.
Commissioner Elliott?
Here.
Mayor Protem Bryant?
Here.
Commissioner Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Rowley?
Here.
Commissioner Paula?
Here.
Commissioner Burns?
Here.
Mayor Morris?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Next is approval of the agenda. Commissioners, unless you recommend rearranging or removing any of the items, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion and go ahead and approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Madrid, second from Commissioner Garza. Commissioners, please vote. And welcome this evening, Commissioner Burns. And I
Thank you.
I need your vote, please.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. And the vote is unanimous and the motion is carried. The agenda has been approved. Next is approval of minutes. We have the minutes from the Thursday, October 7th, 2021 meeting. Those minutes are in your packet and you've had a chance to review them unless you recommend corrections or changes, I would entertain a motion to approve them as they are printed.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Bryant, second from Commissioner Casals. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Burns, may I have your vote, please?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Waiting on the system, Mr. Mayor.
By a vote of seven in favor and one abstention, the motion is carried. The minutes have been approved. Next is recognition of visitors. Welcome to all of you that have joined us this evening. I know many are, many of you are here for plaques and awards and recognition, and so we're so excited to have you join our meeting this evening. And we look forward to hearing from each of you as we reach the point in the agenda that you're here to share with us on. We will move on to proclamations, awards, and presentations. And the first one there this evening is presentation of plaque to Mr. Ruben Gonzalez. And Ms. Burrows, are you going to advise on this?
You know, I'm just gonna start, but Russell is going to do this. I wasn't sure if Russell was gonna be here or not, so.
Oh, very good. Mr. Hooper.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. I was talking about Ruben with Don Clifton a little while ago, and of course, Don Clifton was city manager way back when, when, when you were here early on in your days, because I know you've been with us a long time, Ruben, and and he said that Ruben was just a wonderful ping pong player and a heck of a guy, so. Share that with you, Ruben. So over to you, Russell. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, thank y'all for letting me speak. Ruben has decided to do this after fifty-five years. He started in Mesa in nineteen eighty and last Friday was his last day, October fifteenth. So he had a good, long run. He's built several positions. I mean, he's done a lot of work with the senior Olympics. Yeah, he's done a lot of things. Of course, I know he was down a lot when I first started, but he was a real help to me and his goal for a lot of things in my transition. Ruben, I believe we also have a plaque in store.
We, we do, yes.
If you want this photo off too, obviously Ruben knew it was coming, but he was actually shaving this morning. That monthly, monthly Ruben, that, uh, no, but I really would like to thank Ruben. I mean, like I say, I haven't worked with him very long, especially from the forty-year perspective. I know he's been here and done a lot of things, so I really do appreciate that.
Well, you are correct. We, we have a plaque for Ruben and, and want to congratulate him on his retirement, so I'll meet you down there. And Commissioners, I invite any of you to share any comments that you wish on a forty-one-year career with the city of Clovis.
Mr. Gonzalez, you, you have helped the city with the Roy Walker facility all these years, and I, I think it's, it was always utilized properly and because of your direction. It was utilized by many, many kids. We will miss you, and I just wanna say thank you for your service to the community. Take care.
Thank you, Ruben, for all your years of service.
Ruben, I'd like to also congratulate you on your retirement. I hope you enjoy the many years ahead of being retired and, and thank you for your service to the community and to the kids. Thank you.
Ruben, I also like to thank you. Thank you for all your service and all you did for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruben. Every time that I needed help or I needed something done at Roy Walker, I always called on him. He was very attentive, and I appreciate your service to the city.
Thank you, Ruben, very much. I can't imagine all the stories you can tell from all the years of service at the city, but thank you very much for all you've done for us.
Only the ones I can remember.
Thank you for your service.
And Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners, I would just add that, and I know as mentioned earlier, that being very active in the senior Olympics, and Ruben was definitely very active in the senior Olympics and instrumental in helping them. He led the program most of the years out of Roy Walker and was very instrumental in getting them and their board going. And so he's done great work with that, and I know that we've hosted the games here locally and it's, it's gonna be hard losing Ruben because of those, that knowledge that he carries. And so, Ruben, congratulations. You definitely deserve some retirement years.
Ruben, the plaque, thanks. Thank you for sharing your time and talent and forty-one years you've shared an awful lot of time and talent. The city's grateful. Thank you for your service.
And I understand that there's gonna be some new direction with my old job. I read part of that and it's like, okay, nice with the pay raise, though. Which rather didn't happen when I was working. But recreation is very important to all of us. And going over, because I like it online now that you can actually read your packets. I love it. The new vision, I think, with all of you guys trying to implement more recreation is needed. We just need to not forget those that are at risk. Because Roy Walker, through my years, and yes, I did enjoy the senior Olympics. I will never deny that. But I was talking with Bill Adams a couple of days ago and we were talking about his, his years of teaching and my years at Roy Walker and with the city. And we were talking about what were the most important things that came from those experiences. And for me, it was when an adult or a kid or someone comes back to Roy Walker with that lightbulb blit and, and the joy that they've come in life to, to be in life. That's, that's the best thing about that whole thing. And thank you, guys.
Thank you once again. Thank you.
And another thing, I think Ruben shared with me at one point in time, one of his greatest pleasures was when he started out, he had kids that were playing, and then their kids have now come in. And he's been around long enough for their kids to have now come in. It is a very generational thing and he's really kept the chain going.
Thanks for adding that and congratulations once again. Commissioners, the presentations continue, and these are, these are gonna be fun. We have presentation of plaques and report regarding Trek for Trash 2021. And Mr. Hooper doesn't even need to sit down because this is his as well. Mr. Hooper?
Commissioners, Mayor Protem, thank y'all for again having me back up here. We did the Trek for Trash, uh, October ninth, Saturday morning. Um, I first wanna start off by thanking Kelsey, who's up here, and I made her get up here so I could make her stand. It was her first time to do this. It went great. It really did. She started off, well, I mean, she's helped before and as far as the running, overseeing. Uh, Kelsey was a great big help. Vicky was a great big help, so they made our life easy on that Saturday morning. On the presentation, we had two hundred and twelve volunteers, three hundred and thirty-three bags collected of trash that day. Um, and then the thirty-seven point seventy-six tons of waste, seventy tires over the weekend. They liked donuts, Foxy's. We had some mixed one oh seven. Special, again, to Weiner Sizzles. We went up, picked up hot dogs for lunch. They said, hey, we're not gonna charge you. This is a great event. We wanted to help. So it really was. It was a surprise to us. But a welcome surprise, so I wanted to recognize that. The volunteers, we had, like I said, we had the two hundred and twelve volunteers that really just pitched in and did some great work. Yes, please.
And Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners, we also had a variety of volunteers and teams this year, which was really great. Uh, junior high, high school, military, just families that wanted to come out, individuals that wanted to come out, and I had to pair them with other groups. Um, so just really thank you for everybody that came. You know, it's a family-friendly event. Uh, it's, you get four hours of volunteer service every time that you come to the cleanup, and so it was very great. And also thank you for the commissioners that came out as well.
And again, another special recognition, if we notice the picture here, um, we have a painting professional in that bottom center picture there that has now completed her training class with the city, so is qualified to come out to future events. Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I enjoyed it.
Learn something new every time.
Couldn't move the next day, but it was fun.
And like I say, the public works obviously pitched in. They run around the city and help other city volunteers. Commission, we appreciate everything there. We want to flip to the awards. Where are they?
I have the plaques.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll meet you down there with them.
My prep was not as thorough as it should have been on this one. We obviously had a tie for third place. Yucca Middle School Student Council was tied for third place. They went from second to seventh. Ten volunteers and forty-one bags. I think it's kind of interesting if you'll start noting some of these groups, and we had ten people that did forty bags, and we had, you know, some, some actually, some low numbers that really were impressive. So, do we wanna read them all and then, or how do you?
Let's, let's.
Individually?
Is anyone from Yucca Middle School here? Come on out and get your luck.
Thank y'all very much. Hopefully the start of a many-year tradition with that group. Our next group in the tie was Air Commandos, ACES, I believe they're called. If y'all will step up here, they did, uh, they had thirty volunteers and forty-one bags collected. So I'm not gonna make the comment that the middle school did that.
I saw these, these young ladies have quality of life briefing earlier today, so we're becoming friends.
Great job. Flip my pages, yes. My second place, place group was the Clovis Community College. They did it from Humphrey to Lano along Seventh, or Humphrey from Lano to Seventh Street. Fifty-six volunteers, we got forty-six bags collected. These are represented from Clovis Community College.
Commissioner Rowley?
You got Rowley?
Yes.
I'll bring the award to them. I, I can't take credit for that.
Mr. Rowley is not taking credit.
Thank you to CCC, and I'm sure you'll express our gratitude in that one. And our first place winners was the
Oh, wow.
FCC LA, Family Career Community Leaders of America. Do you have representatives? Please? And again, if you'll notice, there was twenty volunteers and they picked up ninety-one bags of trash. That was really impressive.
I just wanna give a shout out to the youth of our community. You guys knocked it out of the park. Way to go.
And that was where I wanted to thank also, because like I say, we've started, started something here. And I think it's something that we can progress on every year and hopefully build and it's a great program. It really is.
Mr. Hooper, thank you for bringing that. And as well as you, Ms. Knight, thank you for running Trek for Trash this year. And again, thank you to the volunteers that did such a great job and, and congratulations on your plaques. All right. Commissioners, next, we have receipts of petitions and communications. And we do have one item planned there this evening, and it is update on redistricting for municipal boundaries. And Ms. Malonson is gonna advise on this.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. All municipalities for, that are districted are required to review and update if necessary any precincts within their municipality following the results of the decennial census. So it is now time. We have contracted with research and polling. Michael Sharp is hopefully with us this evening. And he's, just some preliminary information. We are not deciding anything at the moment. We are just looking at it, looking to see what options are available. There's been relatively little movement, so there isn't potentially any large changes. We will have a couple other meetings where we will actually make the decisions, and we would like to have a decision made before December first, which is the date of the proclamation for the municipal officer election in March, so that candidates will know which district they fall into. So hopefully Mr. Sharp is on.
Mr. Mayor and Ms. Malonson, I am here.
Okay.
Well, good evening, Mr. Sharp. Thank you for joining us, and we appreciate you giving us an update on, on this redistricting, and we will give you the floor.
Well, thank you very much. And I do have the PowerPoint to share, if I may.
Yes, that's, in fact, I think it is being shared now.
That was mine. That was some others. He basically has something different.
Oh, okay. Yes.
So theoretically, you should see your PowerPoint?
Yes, I believe we are seeing your PowerPoint. There was one up already.
So city of Clovis, city commission redistricting.
There you are. We, we see it now.
Excellent. And if there's a delay, then I'll try to accommodate the delay when I flip slides. So thank you for your patience and letting me present and discuss remotely. So we're here for the city of Clovis, city commission redistricting. And at once every ten years, we do need to redistrict based on the most recent population data. And I'll go ahead and flip on a video just in case you wanna see the face, but a little bit about research and polling. We have a number of years of experience throughout the company. Forty years in existence for the company. I've been with them for about thirty. And so this will be my fourth go around with redistricting. So we started here ninety-one, ninety-two, and then through the two thousand, two thousand and ten census, and then this year's, or last year's census. So we've completed a lot of redistricting projects throughout this company. We've been in legislature, city of Clovis a couple times, municipal schools. Re-enters a little bit, but you have experience there as well. But there's some subjects within the community, great county of Clovis. So who has the responsibility to redistrict? Who's responsible for your redistricting? In, right now, you may have heard about the Citizen Redistricting Committee. And they are responsible for the state house, state senate, congress, and the public education commission. That's a little legislature in the government. County commission is responsible for its own districts, and the city commission, Clovis is responsible for its and then the local school district. The state offices are all partisan, along with the county commission, the state offices and commissions, and school boards are non-partisan. Something to, to remember for those who might be watching, as with all in the audience remotely. But I just wanted to clarify as well, this is the decision of the state commission, and no one else really has the ability to tell you which districts look like, any other governmental entities. Created between timeline, it was a unique and different timeline compared to past censuses. Uh, April first, last census date. Normally, we would have received the census data in March of this year, but because of COVID, it was delayed till August. And we're at the point now, here in October, where we're able to provide some plans and to the commission for its consideration and adoption. Uh, by law, uh, the redistricting has to be finished by December thirty-first of this calendar year. But due to various constraints and timeline issues with respect to running election, for example, election proclamation first of December, uh, the goal here is to finish redistricting by the first of December. But the, the December thirty-first is statutory requirement. So what is redistricting? It is basically drawing the lines or redrawing them, so you figure out who is in which district. With, who is represented by which commissioner? And why do you have to redistrict? Well, in this particular case, in two cases really for Clovis. The population was created with a thousand people. That's a requirement, so if you're over ten thousand, you have to redistrict by statute. You got a population of over thirty-eight thousand, so you agree with that requirement. And then the other reason is population change within the city. It doesn't necessarily mean population change of the city as a whole, but how does that change, that population distribution or that change occur throughout the city? Did some districts experience different levels of change than other districts? And we have to do this redistricting after each decennial census. It's the most current and accurate population data that is available. The five basic principles, I think, like to say, are the ones that are constitutionally legally required, and that fifth one, communities of interest, is everything else that you can consider. As long as you meet those first four, then you can use the communities of interest to modify the districts. With respect to population, seeing new people out, well, who gets counted? Who's part of the population that we use? And short answer is everybody. Longer answer is adult, kids, college students, citizens, non-citizens, those who are incarcerated. Everybody who is a resident or lived, lived within the United States is counted on census day, April first to last year. And the folks are counted at their normal place. They live and sleep most of the time. So you happen to have college-age kids or living in the dorms or, or living at the university out of town, that's where they were counted. As opposed to at the home residence of the, of the parents. I mentioned population change. This was interesting, and so Clovis changed by about two percent over the past ten years, just according to the census. Uh, we're not trying to take into account any overcount or undercounts or anything like that. Number one, we don't know what they are. Uh, so we're just still using the, the most accurate data that we can. But you can see that even though Clovis only, like, what the same census data is told, but in the city, it did have a different vision of population change. So you can see that District One grew by about twenty percent, almost about eighteen hundred people. District Two experienced, according to the census, a population decline by about twelve percent. And three or four, three and four declined and increased, or changed, declined and increased respectively. So with respect to populations, that tells you that, yes, we do need to redistrict. The district is proud of compliance. And they're, they're too far apart from where they should be in terms of people. We determine that equal population. So Congress, we have to get those districts to be exactly equal as possible. We want to, after redistricting, uh, know that no matter where you live throughout the city, that you have equal representation. You have in District One, the same representation that the citizen has anybody else in any other district throughout the city. For Congress, it's half these equals practical, and for city councils or city commissions, you can, you don't have to be perfectly equal, but you can go above or below this equal population, which I'll get to next, by about plus or minus five percent. So if Clovis had a total population of three thousand five hundred, how do you figure out how the, the population that each district will have to be considered equal? So you take the city's total population by by four, and that would make it six hundred people. So in a perfect world, every district would be ninety-six hundred and forty-one folks. But the courts have said it's hard for the smaller entities to get that number right on the nose. We'll allow the cities to go above or below that ninety-six hundred by about five percent, so that they are substantially equal. That plus or minus five percent is a That plus or minus 5% is a measure of deviation, so it's an interpretation of plus of the 10% total deviation. You can take that ideal pop, you can go above it by no more than 5, you can go below it by more than 5. As long as every district falls within that range, then they're considered equal. So that range would be 9,641, plus or minus about 480 people. And you can see in the ranges, as long as they fall within 9,160 to 1,120, then they should be counted. And again, it's based on total population, not registered voters. That's a common question that we have. The second wrong, I guess, redistricting is making sure that the minority population has an opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. With New Mexico, the communities that we typically look at are Native American population and the Hispanic population. In other states, if they have to correct the population, it's also a group that have majorities in elected districts. But in New Mexico and Clovis, the Hispanic population is one that's large enough such that we can create majority districts, a majority Hispanic districts. We just have to make sure that the population has an opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. It doesn't mean that guarantee that, for example, an Hispanic candidate wins in the Hispanic district. It just has to be that opportunity. The other side of that point is that we can't create a district that is based solely on race. Race can't be the predominant criteria. You can't have funny-looking districts. You have to be able to understand that district in parameters other than race. So we have to make sure that we give the opportunity. It can't be the only reason for why the district looks the way it is. The third actor or principle is compactness. There are really different measures to figure out compactness, but none are perfect. It refers to the shape of the district and not its geographic size. A good example of that is the House district that is in Clovis. House 64 is relatively, relatively small, it's relatively compact. But then you have House 67, which wraps around the town, goes all the way up to Clovis. That's a really large district and area, but it's pretty compact. So it's more in terms of looking at the shape of the district as opposed to its size. And also, the compactness can be affected by, say, the cities, any city that has an irregular outer boundary. Clovis has certain annexations that go further north of the city, and it makes the boundary not necessarily square. And so when we look at compactness, we like to look at the inner boundaries between the bits within the city, like Clovis. So examples of compactness, the figure on the left is Mexico's 30s. They're all ranked 91, because the line is between Apples, Apples. And so they're, they're actually in Mexico's, pretty compact. It's big, goes from Park to Clovis today, but it still looks pretty good. The two figures on the right, district in green, in the monks, in the midst of all the colored ones, that was one district, and was struck down by the courts because it was drawn based solely on race. And this is in Houston. So they said the district is filled with large shapes, all with unconstitutional. And same thing with the district of North Carolina, in red on the bottom. They were stripped down. So two for districts that are compact. In terms of contingency, just have to make sure that every district is made up of one piece, not two or more. Figure on the left is your case, I think you might, on the right, it's two pieces, though it's not. I like to say, if you can put your pencil on a district on a map, you can get to every other part of that district without lifting up the pencil, then that district is continuous. And finally, once you've met all those criteria, you can use anything else that you can think of to determine what your districts look like. You can examine political subdivisions, for example, precincts. One, it's important for precincts to be used and not split to minimize voter confusion. It certainly helps people who are used to voting in other elections, for example, the House or Senate, or County Commission, to know that if they are in a certain precinct, they're always going to be in the same district as somebody else within their precinct. You can also look at neighborhood, maybe keep it intact, if you don't want to split them, or geographic boundaries, for example, major streets or arroyos or ditches. You can also look at the existing districts, and you can say, well, we'd like districts that more to what we have on painting. And another one that you've lots of thought is the current elected officials. Is it okay to draw districts where there are no pairings? I know that Clovis is a dual-member district, so one, an example of this, you just, if you wanted to avoid parent incumbents, then the two commissioners from District 1 wouldn't be in any other district except 1, 2 from District 2, same thing, and same for 3 and 4. So that's okay to do, to take into account, as long as you don't violate the previous So a couple things to remember when looking at the plans, is they're rarely perfect. There's always something about a plan which you may or may not like. Maybe there's a neighborhood that's split, or precincts are split, or just something else about it that you just don't like. And you may say, well, why can't we, or can we move, say, a precinct from District 1 to 2, or 3 to 4, or 2 to 3, and so on? And if that sort of suggestion comes along, just know that these districts aren't compact enough, that they border other districts, that if you make change to one district, it can affect at least one other district, and it could affect the whole four, like a domino effect. Might affect, make one change, and it could impact all four districts. So that's one thing to remember. The other thing is because we have so many different factors, and they work against each other. And that's one of the reasons why we don't have perfect plans. We have to consider population, but we have to have districts of equal population. That may require a splitting of the neighborhood, or may have to follow some other feature that we don't want to in the name of population, but really, that's the most important factor of population. So none of the kinds of necessarily set, they're here for discussion and any suggested change. So are there any questions on the--
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. No, I don't believe there are any questions.
Okay, thank you. So I'll go ahead and try to get to the plans here. So it started out with five, and with some really, really minor changes between them. And earlier today, I guess I had inspiration, and so I sent you a six to consider as well. So during this, oh, whoops. So during the process, we just, on the ABCs, we're going to do public input, we're going to show plans, we'll revise the plans if needed, if you'll adopt the plan. And after that happens, in order to get the voters in the right districts, the county clerk will do their magic to get the folks that need to change districts into the correct ones. So then we have the plans. Here are your current, the current districts, with respect to deviation. So the first column is the district number, then we have total population, and then we have the deviation and raw number, as well as the percent deviation. So we want to look at this percent deviation column. And any district that's outside of plus or minus 5% is one that needs to change. So you can see that District 1, as we saw previously, was the fastest-growing district. It's too big, they have to lose population. District 2 is the opposite. It needs to gain population because it's negative 11 from the deviation. It's almost 1,100 people, too small. District 3 is too small as well, it will need to add folks. And District 4 is too big, it will need to shed some population. So we're all, we're shooting for that ideal population of 9,641. I currently have District 2 as a 52% adult Hispanic, District 3 is a 2 and 1/2. And you do have a sizable African-American black population, but it's 6% of the city, and there's no way to create a majority district of adults African-American population. So here's the current districts, and I'd be familiar, folks are pretty familiar with how they are now, but I just wanted to bring them up on the screen. If you remember from the previous slide, Districts 2 and 3 on the bottom, both need to grow, and Districts 1 and 4 both need to lose population. So you can, one aspect, or potential option, is to move 3 and 4, and move 2 to 1, and you might be finished. So let's look at Plan A. So Plan A does just that. It takes District 3, and the change to District 3, 4, is that District 3 moves north of 21st, up to that ditch or arroyo that's south of Spencer Park and Sun and Drive, and that goes to Thornton. So this one little triangular precinct up to 21st moves from District 4 to District 3. So 4 lost half population, that's the only change. And the other change in this plan, that District 2, because it was too small, District 1 was too big, District 2 moves to the east. And it adds everything south of 7th, east of Sycamore. And then north of 7th, it adds most of the neighborhoods up to 14th, east of Norris. And there is the Mobile Home Community, where I think the district line goes around Chaparral, so the homes on the east side of Chaparral next to Parkview Elementary are in District 1, but the rest of that community is in District 2. In terms of Plan B, this one, I thought, well, what happens if you keep District 3 south of 21st Street? What has to happen? Well, District 3 then has to go into District 2 and pick up that population that-- and District 3 moves over to Wallace, south of 1st, to Prince. And District 2 is the same as in Plan A, with the folks east of Sycamore and east of Norris. District 4 was a little bit too small. So what happened with 4 is because it was too small, or too big, excuse me, had to lose population before it lost population to District 3. But in this case, District 1 is able to take 10 people. They gave up one neighborhood to District 4, southwest of Yanost Pecado and east of the cemetery. So it'd be Village Drive, and then Mariposa and the Garrett Streets within that one corner, southeast of Yanost Pecado. So that's Plan B. Plan C is the same as B, but I wanted to show just the difference between 2 and 3. So it's a minor change in speed, it's a minor change between 2 and 3, where District 3 goes along 10th, south of 10th, all the way to Maine, so the area south of 10th from Maine to Thornton. North of 7th moves from District 2 to 3. And District 2 has the same eastern change that we saw in the previous. District D, really, the change here, that you've been in the previous plan, and this Thornton, Maine, 7th, 14th area, we had a more horizontal shift in population. In this case, it's more of a vertical shift. So those between 14th and 7th are in 3, over to Merryweather. So it's 14th, 7th, Merryweather are in 3. That's the only change there. Plan E is a little bit of a different take with respect to 1 and 4. If the Commission didn't like this one neighborhood at the corner of Yanost Pecado, going into District 1 from 4, the other option is to move, the people who live on the north side of 21st, east of Sycamore, those people get moved into 1, instead of the folks south of Yanost Pecado and west of Norris. So that's Plan E. Pretty wide changes, but just nothing different. And then finally, Plan F, with all those previous plans, they do three things. So I thought, why not take a look, and it's a contractual identity of this earlier, but like I said, they were gracious, kind of the last minute, and I thought, well, it's great. And I wanted to make sure that in Plan E, one other change to note, is that District 1 does the people who live at Yanost Pecado and west of Prince, moves it from 4. So everybody north of Yanost Pecado is in District 4. So Plan F kind of started with that, that look on the north, Yanost Pecado is all in 1. And District 3 has that one precinct, south of Spencer Park, down to 21st. And the boundary between 2 and 3 stays the same. The other change is that in District 2, remember that District 2 took the Mobile Home Community, north of 7th and east of Norris, so the Parkview Elementary. This case, we're able to take that entire neighborhood and take all of that and put it into District 2. The other change is District 2 got a little bit too big. 4 lost some population, both to 3 and 1 in the north, is add that population. It does, it's south a little bit, south of 21st, between Prince and Sycamore to 14th. So 21st, to Sycamore to 14th, to Prince. One square, and that one precinct 32 does move from 2 to 4. There are some differences to the plan. One is that there are zero precinct splits. The neighborhood east of Norris and north of 7th, that is entirely within one district, is no longer split. And this plan also happens to have a better distribution with respect to voting rights in the Hispanic population, such that District 3 admits 60%, and District 2 is a 54% Hispanic voting population. So with respect to those criteria, this is a better plan, especially with respect to the voting rights. And keeping communities unsplit, since they're as follows major streets, and also not losing any precincts. So open for any comments or comments. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sharp. We appreciate all the work that you've put into this thus far. Definitely have given us a lot to look at and think about in these various options. We appreciate that. Commissioners, do you have comments or questions?
Not this time.
Mr. Sharp, we don't have questions or comments at this time. I think this, this information is definitely a lot to look at and think about, and we appreciate it very much. Any, any comments or questions, Ms. Malonson or Mr. Hoewell?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protimmian Commissioners. And this evening was just kind of a kickoff to get the plans in front of you, get you to start evaluating, looking at them. And so at the next commission meeting, we're going to have more of a working session to where we start to garner your feedback after you've had a chance to put a real good look into them. And then that'll allow Mr. Sharp to go back and any community feedback that I received, plus your feedback, and make any adjustments to them before we bring you to, to them for you for final action at the following commission, following that, the first meeting in December. So thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Understood.
And Mayor, we would like, I think we would like to get it down to three, three maps, so that it's not quite as overwhelming for the Commission to decide amongst five. So I think that's kind of the plan, is to try to get it down to the--
So in our next meeting, we'll spend some time--
Yes.
--and, and try and work it down to three options to decide amongst at the, the next meeting. So, very good. Well, thank you. Mr. Sharp, again, thanks for all the work, all the effort that you've put into this up to this point, and for the time that you've spent with us explaining it this evening. We're grateful for what you're doing for us. Did you have anything else to add?
No, I don't, Mr. Mayor. Just thank you for the opportunity to describe the plans, and I'm always available for any questions that you may have.
Outstanding. Thank you very much for being with us this evening.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
All right, Commissioners, we have lots to, a lot to think about there, a lot to look at, but we'll move on while we are still in receipts of petitions and communications. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to bring anything before the Commission this Hearing and seeing none, I will just add, under Commissions here, another, another plug for voting, the November 2nd ballot at the county has an important question to the citizens of Clovis related to the use of the economic development funds that the city generates through grocery receipts and has within our budget. If, if the voters say yes, the city would be allowed to treat retail development as economic development. And what I mean by that is, we would be able to incentivize retail development, both expansion of existing-- both expansion of existing businesses as well as having a tool to help attract new business to Clovis. So I encourage everyone to please be informed on that issue and get out and vote. One last call under Communications. All right, we will move on into the consent agenda. This item is placed on the agenda so that the commission, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any proposal does not meet with the approval of all of the commission members or if a citizen so requests, that item will be heard when reached under the regular agenda. Commissioners, six items on the consent agenda this evening. The first is the motion to place. The sixth is the motion to approve or acknowledge. I will read two through five. Item two is request for approval of scope and fee for Lydic engineers and surveyors for Norris Street reconstruction between Zia Elementary and Yanosticato. Item three is approval of addendum to Bahannon Huston's Shooting Range Construction Phase Contract. Item four, request for approval to apply for and accept if successful a land-water conservation fund grant for improvements to Goodwin Lake Trails and matching funds of $150,000. Item five is request for approval to appoint Clyde Davis to serve on the Parks, Recreation and Beautification Committee as a representative from an association utilizing parks. That is your consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to place the indicated items on consent.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Garza.
Check it.
Second from Mayor Protem Bryant. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Burns, may I have your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And the vote is unanimous. The motion is carried and the items have been placed on the consent agenda. I would now entertain a motion to approve or acknowledge all items on the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Casals, second from Commissioner Garza. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Burns, may I have your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And the vote is unanimous and the motion is carried. Commissioners, we have nothing to deal with under the next two sections on the agenda. So we'll move on to new business, where we have three items this evening. The first is request for approval to amend and expand the recreation administrator position for Parks and Recreation to include a pay range adjustment. And to advise on that this evening, one of the stars of tonight's meeting, Mr. Hooper.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. Yes, we have a, as we discussed with the park boards earlier this week, we have a good opportunity here with creating and changing positions. So we'd like to change a position from our recreation center administrator to a recreation administrator, basically just broadening the range of their duties, obligations, opportunities in advance or in the future as with the background and summaries, it says this position or what we're trying to create is not going to conflict with anything that's existing. But there are a lot of opportunities for growth within that recreation. From a fiscal impact, in this year's budget, there is none. Although we are trying to raise the position from a level thirty-five to a level forty-five, which will increase the range, since we had an incumbent that was basically at the top of the range, the new hire will not affect or won't come in at that rate. So it wouldn't affect this yearly budget. Obviously, the future is another issue, especially if he's here for forty years. So it's just something. Will do, answer any questions? Obviously, I don't know the background or what y'all might need to know or what questions y'all have.
And Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, if I may, the Parks Board met on Monday evening after this commission packet went out and unanimously approved a recommending this to the commission for your consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. This does come with the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Committee. Commissioners that serve on Parks, did you have any comments?
No, we didn't. I stated at the Parks and Rec meeting that I'm a huge advocate of quality of life and recreation here in the city, and I'm thrilled with this expansion of this position.
Thank you, Commissioner Paula. Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Madrid and a second from Commissioner Paula. Is there any further debate? Hearing and seeing none? Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Burns, if I could have your vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. And the vote is unanimous and the motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Appreciate that. Item two under new business, Commissioners, is request for approval to temporarily amend the adoption process for the City of Clovis Animal Shelter and to reactivate the Animal Control Task Force Ad Hoc Committee. Ms. Burrows, are you going to advise on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commission. There's some information about this in your packet. The local veterinarians are no longer able to participate in the spay and neutering of pets adopted through the City of Clovis's Animal Shelter Program. And in order to continue the program as an interim measure while the City of Clovis Animal Control Task Force works on a long-term solution, the city would like to require individuals adopting animals from the shelter to pay a fifty-dollar adoption fee, which would be broken down into ten dollars for a rabies certification, ten dollars for a microchip fee, a twenty-five-dollar charge, which will be refunded when proof the animal, the spay and neutered, is provided to the City of Clovis and a five-dollar administrative fee. The recommendation, of course, but also includes the reconstitution of the Animal Control Task Force. They last met a few years ago. So as you also have in your packet, when they last met in February 2019, so the majority of the members have been contacted and have advised they would be willing to serve again if appointed. Linda Cross was the president previously. Lindsay Dunahy was an at-large member, as was Gay Cook. Dr. Hudson was the veterinarian. Cindy Clayton with Cindy's Rescue Group and Wendy Turner with the same rescue group. And then Ms. Erica Romero have advised that they would like to serve. Previously, the supervisor for the animal control was a voting member, but as we're not having staffers voting members anymore, we're not recommending that they be a voting member, but that they participate or the police department decides who they'd like to have participate in an ex officio capacity. And of course, staff will also attend. And then for the commission, you have, when you did your commissioners on committees, Mayor Morris, Commissioner Rowley, Mayor Protem Bryant, Commissioner Casals and Commissioner Garza also serve on that committee currently.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows. Appreciate that. The animal control and the adoption process and all of it is just such a challenge. And there's so many just wonderful caring people that they continue to work on that. But the current process that we have is broken. And so we need to do something in the meantime. While this committee comes together, this ad hoc committee comes together and works on a longer-term solution. I think that what's being proposed here, what's before you, is very reasonable and makes good sense. I think that the individuals that would serve on the ad hoc committee are sufficient and a good group. Those are my thoughts. What are your thoughts, Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I'm okay with all this. I just want to make sure that our current commissioners serving are okay with that.
That's good.
And if they are, then I move for approval.
Okay, good, good thought. We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Garza, but in making that motion, he raises a good point. I'm certainly willing to serve on the committee as being described. Commissioner Rowley, when we set all of this up so long ago, do you even remember that you were on this committee?
I do vaguely remember signing up for it, but.
Are you ready to meet and discuss these items?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, Mayor Protem?
Yes, I'd be pleased to.
Commissioner Casals, what are your thoughts?
Yes.
Very good, very good. All right, well, we have a motion.
I'll second approval. I'll second the motion.
All right, and a second from Mayor Protem. The motion came from Commissioner Garza. The second came from Mayor Protem Bryant. And what is before you is the approval to temporarily amend the adoption process and to activate the task force that is the ad hoc committee as discussed. Commissioners, please vote. Commissioner Burns, may I have your vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And the vote is unanimous and the motion is carried. Thank you very much. Item three, request for approval of City of Clovis logo. Ms. Knight.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. Over the past few years, the Clovis Action Team, which consists of representatives from the City of Clovis, Chamber of Commerce, local businesses and community members, they have been working to rebrand Clovis. With the assistance of Once-A-Day Marketing, which was funded through the City of Clovis Lodgers Tax Funds, the team developed a brand promise and a new tagline, heartfelt connections, endless horizons. The team then worked to design, the team then worked with a design firm, Leighton Moon, to create a community logo. And the logo and tagline were announced in August of this year to be utilized by businesses, organizations and the community to help rebrand Clovis. So in response to this, the City of Clovis contracted Leighton Moon again to create our own logo that falls in line with this new community brand. And you should have a copy of the proposed logo in your packet tonight. This logo will be utilized for nonofficial communication from the City of Clovis in our marketing and promotional materials, along with communication from our various departments. The community brand color scheme will also be utilized in our marketing, website, wayfinding signage and more. And while our city seal currently serves in this role, the logo will allow us to preserve the seal for official purposes only. And the logo and new color scheme paired with the overall community brand will help take our marketing and communications to the next level. And so I'm open for any questions you might have.
Thank you for that, Ms. Knight. Appreciate that very much. Commissioners, what questions do you have, comments about this new logo?
I guess I have a question. Are we voting on between the three logos or this is just a variety to choose from?
Yes, what you have is a variety. It shows there's a different, there's a color scheme with this logo. And so depending on what the graphic you might be creating looks like, if it's a darker background, you would use a white logo. So it's all the same. When Leighton Moon, when we finalize the logo and Leighton Moon sends me all of the different vector files and things to use, it will have some that are in all white, all black, or the full color scheme, things like that.
Okay.
Yes.
I love it. In fact, I was at the chamber a few weeks ago and was standing, happened to be standing next to somebody from South Texas that was traveling through. And there's a prototype t-shirt that's, I think, up on a mannequin at the chamber. And she wanted to buy that t-shirt and so did the people that were with her. But so, I mean, we didn't, it's not available for purchase, but it's definitely, it sounds like it's going to be a hot-selling item.
Yes, yes.
The shirts aren't on order and they are, they have all kinds of merchandise for sale with that logo. And I love that logo.
And so Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners, and what I would point out is the difference between the overall community brand and our logo. Obviously, the overall community brand, as you look what's in front of you this evening, the, it doesn't say City of on it. And the graphic that's above Clovis is actually shifted to the center. And so that's what ties us in this proposed brand to the overall community brand, as well as the color scheme. And as Kelsey mentioned, we plan to implement it into each one of our departments. Leighton Moon has provided us some examples of how that could look. And then we'd obviously change business cards, we'd change our letterhead. And like Kelsey said, communications from the commission would still utilize the seal. So that's when she refers to official communications. The rest of our departments and out of administration would still utilize the proposed new logo that you're seeing this evening.
Thanks for that explanation. I love the logo. It's fantastic and I love that it's, you know, integrated with the community brand that's been, that's been come up with. Any other comments?
No, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Rowley and second from Commissioner Madrid. Commissioners, please vote.
Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners, while you are sitting there, I saw James sitting over there. He will still have his Clovis Regional Airport logo that he just came up with and they came up with. So he's kind of a standalone. He's on an island out there anyway. He's in town, still have it.
I'm glad you clarified that. His face was going like, what's going to happen with mine?
Commissioner Burns, may I have your vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. And the vote is unanimous and the motion is carried. Ms. Knight, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to know that the Clovis Regional Airport logos and graphics will still look the same because they look great as well. I love the way the city departments are branding themselves, the way the city is branding itself. We'll move on to reports of boards, officers and committees. We have a monthly investment report from Ms. Malonson. Ms. Malonson?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. We are first quarter complete for the 2022 fiscal year. We started September with fifty-one point nine million, ended at fifty-two point three million. Brief overview of our funds. General Fund One, ending cash, five point seven million. Solid Waste Fund Two, two point two million. Environmental Tax Fund Six, eight point three million. Our Wastewater Fund Ten, four point five million. Economic Development Gross Receipts Fund Sixty Four, three point three million. Our Water Quarter Percent Gross Receipts Fund Sixty Six, four point seven million. Our Drainage Improvements Fund Eighty Eight, one point three million. And of course, our American Rescue Plan Fund Ninety Four, four point seven million. And a brief breakdown of our funds available. We have a little over twenty-nine million in our local banks and twenty-three point two million in the state investment pool. Our interest for the month was thirty-eight hundred dollars. For our three-month year-to-date, we're just under twelve thousand dollars. State pool dropped from point oh six three down to point oh five six one. And our gross receipts did come in yesterday. We are up almost eleven percent from this time last year and a little over eleven percent from this same time two years ago. We are about twenty-two percent above budget and seven percent above our year-to-date actual. And in reference to our internet sales, we had twenty-three hundred reporters last August. We had thirty-seven hundred and fifty-one this month. So an increase of about fourteen hundred and thirty, of which six hundred and eighty-one are in the retail trade. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. That is, that's the kind of report that you probably like to give. And everyone likes to hear, right? I mean, this is all good news. Wow. Some fourteen hundred new reporters of gross receipts due to the internet grocery receipts tax.
Or new businesses.
New, new businesses.
Yes, we don't have any information on how many of those are internet, but a significant increase.
Understood. Well, that's, that's very exciting and great news for Clovis. Glad to have the internet grocery receipts tax working in our favor now. Glad the state got that ironed out. Any comments or questions for Ms. Malonson?
Good report. Thank you.
Good report. Thank you for that report, Ms. Malonson. Appreciate that very much. Thought I heard something, sorry.
That's what I thought. Because they dream in over there.
Let's, let's get a report briefly on Civil Aviation Board. I sit on Civil Aviation Board, but unfortunately wasn't able to be at it. So I'll ask maybe Mr. Harris or Mr. Hoawalt. I know that there was some discussion about the Central Air Service contract.
Certainly. And so the Civil Aviation Board considered the proposals that were received. We did receive three proposals for our EAS service, one from Boutique Air, one from Advanced Air and then one from Denver Air. The recommendation to the city commission will be to continue on with Denver Air providing our EAS service. And so that'll be coming to you at your next commission meeting for consideration to make a. commission meeting for consideration to make a recommendation to the USDOT, who has the obvious final say. We also, James gave some updates on various projects that are occurring out at the airport. And the board also, we've talked about the hangar rates, increasing those, and coming up with a plan why we're increasing them to make improvements to the existing hangars. So that's something that we're discussing. And then we also increased the markup on the Jet A fuel cells as well as the low lead cells, which will also be coming to you at a future meeting.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that, that report on civil aviation. Next, a report regarding the New Mexico Economic Development and Policy Interim Committee meetings, which took place here in Clovis last week on Tuesday and Wednesday. I was lucky enough to have the chance to go out and give a welcome. The interim committee met at the Civic Center, and I went out and was able to welcome them and spend some time with them for the first couple of sessions of their meeting. And I saw several of you there as well. I thought that, you know, there are fifty-five members of the legislature that serve on that interim committee. And so I was excited that they were meeting in our city and saw it as an opportunity to go and, you know, make a good impression on them and hopefully maintain a place in their minds as they do their work on that committee and as they serve in the legislature. So that, as I, as I understood it, they were very pleased with their time in Clovis and had good meetings. Did anyone have any other comments on that? Okay, very good. Then we will look for a report regarding Parks Recreation and Beautification. Commissioner Madrid, we, I think we got a lot of what was discussed at your committee meeting tonight in one of the new business items. And so were there any other highlights from that committee meeting?
No, no, that was it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Next, we'll report regarding the Economic Incentive Board meeting, which happened yesterday morning. And we will be, I'll let Mr. Hawal report on that. Would you like to report on that?
Sure, Mayor.
There's a recommendation coming I'd like for you to share.
Absolutely. The board only heard one agenda item at their meeting, and that was regarding our economic development strategy and plan. And they're making a recommendation to the city commission to move forward with a company called TIP Strategies. And so they'll, obviously, if y'all approve it at an upcoming meeting, then we'll enter a contract with them, and they'll help us develop our economic development strategy and plan to move forward, so.
Thanks. Appreciate that. I'm excited to see that proposal come before the commission and very excited about the idea of having a economic development assessment and plan to work on. Finance Committee meeting, the happenings of that meeting, which took place yesterday, were covered very well in Ms. Malonson's monthly finance report. So let's see here. Senior Services Committee actually did not meet today as was originally planned. So that would conclude reports. I would just offer, even though I went to him a couple of times during reports, would the city manager have anything to add in the way of reports?
No, sir. I think we covered it well.
All right, very good. Very good. How about future agenda items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. We will have the Central Air Service recommendation at the next meeting. The adoption of the ordinance for the transmission line for the airport, railroad parking lot will be on the next agenda. And the economic development opportunity study recommendation, TIP Strategies will be on the next agenda. That's all I have at the moment. Thank you.
Well, that's, that's quite a lot. So thank you for that. We look forward to the next, next meeting. We'll have a lot of business to conduct. Announcement of date, time, and place of city board and commission meetings. Clovis Carver Library Board will meet at five thirty PM Monday, October 25th here in the North Annex. The Public Works Committee will meet at eight thirty AM on Wednesday, October 27th here in this room. The Water Authority Board meets at three PM on Thursday, October 28th, and will be down in the Portales Memorial Building. Civil Aviation meets at five thirty PM on Tuesday, November 2nd here in the North Annex. And the next city commission meeting is at five fifteen on Thursday, November 4th. Commissioners, it's always a pleasure. Our meeting is adjourned.